Standby for scroll. Standby for thirty. Thirty seconds. Twenty seconds. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to the Wednesday, January twelfth, 2022 Board of County Commission meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Director of Communications. Every year, the Chairman of the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners has the honor of recognizing community organizations for the presentation of the Chairman's Award. This year Chairman Peter Meitzner has selected Textron Aviation, Spirit Aero Systems, and WSU Tech for their continued partnership and strong support for and in our region. At this time, I'd like to turn the podium podium over to Chairman Peter Meitzner to present this year's Chairman's Award. Chairman?
Thank you, Akeem, and good morning, everybody. Thanks for being here, fellow Commissioners. Thank you. As Akeem said, there's an annual Chairman's Award, and it's kind of a luxury responsibility of the of the Chairman to actually make the make this decision all by by themselves. And and it also provides a time for me personally to just reflect on the last year about the community and what individual or what group or whatever would be so well deserving of of a recognition by, quote, the Chairman. So with that, knowing what all we've been through this year and how this community has done a remarkable job of keeping keeping its feet on the ground and battling through what we've battled through, obviously, the the COVID world, and and we are the largest city in the state, and we're the largest supplier of of new dollars that are manufactured in this state, and and we export stuff, and new dollars come into this state. So I've always been one that that am glad to brag up in Topeka or even regionally out of the out of the outside Kansas, that in Wichita area, we we make things, we build things, we do it really well, we send them out to other states, other countries, and our our community and our state benefits from, quote, these new dollars. We don't just churn our own dollars, we we do stuff. So with that, I always feel confident talking to others that how valuable our region is, not only our city and our county, but even our surrounding counties. With that, it allowed me to reflect. We've got two of the large, the two largest employers in the state are located here, and I've grown to know them personally, and then also we have a a school that that trains most of these people that that are employed. So with that, I thought, well, let's let's that they're all collectively deserving of of the Chairman's Award. So with that, I'd like to call up Textron first. Doug, do you want to come up? I had I had invited Ron Draper, who's the CEO of Textron, to be here, but but he is battling what we've all battled, which is a little thing called COVID. So but with that, Doug, I appreciate all that you do. You communicate with us regularly to keep us updated on the world of Textron, and that's been valuable. And private aviation, you can say a few words, but private aviation kind of evolved in a in a nice way because people weren't able to fly commercially, so they started investing in, you know, time sharing or whatever you want to call it of of private aviation. So Textron got to benefit through this pandemic time, and all the people that they had laid off, they called them all back that they could and and have been growing. So no question, it's a huge value for our community. So Doug, thank you on behalf of Ron Draper and on behalf of the Commission. Thank you for your.
Chairman, I'd just like to say, on behalf of our
Go ahead.
Chairman, on behalf of and Commissioners, on behalf of our nearly 10,000 employees here in in the Wichita area, Central County, it's just a pleasure to 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 have a partnership like we do with the with the county. So thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you. And next up, another good, good friend that runs Spirit Aero Systems is Tom Gentelli. Tom, come on up, please, because this is Tom has done a fantastic job of leading through these incredibly difficult times. I remember when they we pivoted and all of a sudden you started making ventilators in a matter take of manufacturing expertise, and I think it was ventilators that we were building, yeah. And all of a sudden, they're manufacturing a shortage of ventilators in the country, and they figured out how to do it, and I think in about thirty days, and then another fifteen days after that, they started rolling them off. So the flexibility of of what Tom and his group, and then the the new the new building that we built, that you built, very impressive. And and Tom also, him and his wife are very active in in the community, and they do a fantastic job with with other nonprofits, and and Tom cares a lot about this community and a lot of places, about the downtown city and about the region and the state. And so with that, Tom, I can't I can't thank you enough for our friendship and for what you do for the city. Thank you.
Chairman Meitzner, Commissioners, thank you very much. On behalf of all the Spirit employees, we also have about 10,000 Spirit employees here in the in the area. We really appreciate the partnership and the collaboration with the county. You have been great supporters. During the last couple of years, it's been a challenge, not only have we faced the COVID pandemic, but also the grounding of the MAX, which is our largest program. And the county has been a fantastic partner, helping us through these very difficult, challenging times, and enabling us to continue to produce. But not only that, continuing to invest in the future. Chairman Meitzner, you mentioned our Global Digital Logistics Center. The county was instrumental in doing that. Commissioner Dennis, you were there for the groundbreaking, and we couldn't have done that without the support of the county. And so we appreciate that. It was an investment in the future and one that we think will pay off for the whole region. So thank you again for this honor. We we really appreciate it.
And I think Commissioner Howell used to work at, was it called Boeing then? Yes, and he was there. I think it was good, yeah. And Commissioner Howell was supportive of that, if I recall, when when that was in front of the Commission. So next up, last but not least, of course, is WSU Tech. I've had the luxury of serving on on the board when I was at the city, and then fortunately, when I came over here to the county, the Commission allowed me to stay as our representative on the board. And we saw the last number during those years, we went through a couple of, we went through a president, and and then we had to choose a new president and go through name change and this and that. And this person named Sheri Utash, Dr. Sheri Utash, always kept coming to the top of this is the person that should be the leader. And she has demonstrated incredible leadership from WSU at a tech technical school. In our last board meeting, Sheri said it's kind of embarrassing when she was at at a tech, regional tech president's conference, and everybody's talking about, what, eat flat is the new growth on enrollment, and everybody's bragging if they were just flat, they were like, we're flat. Sheri had to say, well, we're like nineteen percent growth, or whatever. She said it was embarrassing. So it's a credit to to her leadership. Her staff is fantastic. Her teachers take a vested interest in not only getting these people certified, certificated to get for to get a job, but they follow up with them during that course. They, if the students miss a a class, the teacher calls them and says, hey, is anything wrong? Because these are young adults, often they have children, or they have car problems, and all the challenges that that young adults would have. And so they take a vested interest in making sure that this person stays on track to get that certificate and get that job. And we we have testimony after testimony of how happy they are. Many of them come back, and they're tearful, actually, in in their thanks. So Sheri is a huge part of the success of our region, and well deserved. Her school is fantastic, but her, as a person, she's she's a wonderful person and a and a great friend. So Sheri, thank you for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Meitzner, so much, and to the members of the Commission. Thank you. This is a real honor for all of all of our team at WSU Tech. On behalf of each one of them, I want to thank you for the recognition and for this honor. I also just want to take a moment to just think about and reflect about to 2007, 2008, when the aviation industry came forward to the County Commission at that point in time and said, we have to have a place that is a great place to train and educate our future workforce. So the National Center for Aviation Training was created because of the vision of the aviation industry leaders and the County Commission. So it has been our great pleasure, as servants of higher education, to take this place that you developed, your predecessors and a lot of a lot of blood, sweat, and tears from the people that had the vision, from the aviation leadership and from the County Commission, to develop what is now known as the National Center for Aviation Training, which has been able to do this great work. And not only is it known for great work in this community and in this state, but it is known for great work across the nation. And as we continue to build and and bring people to Wichita for these incredible careers in aviation, the National Center for Aviation Training is is the jewel that was created by the aviation industry and the County Commission. And so for that, I thank you. It has been our pleasure to live out the vision that was started. So thank you so much.
So with that, I will thank you. Thank you all again. Well deserved, and we'll get on with our with our business at hand. But and Sheri also, now she's got out of the aviation business or migrated in, she's going to be in the food business now. So we've got a big, got a big building downtown, the old Henry's Building is, when is that scheduled to open? I can't even remember.
Next August.
August will be the first.
August of twenty-two.
August of twenty-two will be a culinary, what is it, the National Center for Culinary?
National Institute for Culinary and Hospitality Education.
Okay, it's another new acronym you all get used to. ITCH. Okay, so my sincere thanks and appreciation, and let's have a very prosperous 2022, and a safe one, too, let's hope. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, before they depart, would you give an opportunity for the Commission?
Yeah, okay. Let's let the Commissioners comment. Go ahead.
We can just go down line?
Okay. Jim?
I don't think it started, if you don't mind. Just I just wanted, I was just reflecting. I I'm so, I'm surprised by, we we don't even know the Chairman's Award until we show up here and see what happens. So we didn't know. But this is a great, great choice. And thank you, Chairman, for for making this election today. But as I'm reflecting on Spirit Aero Systems' impact on this community, can you just confirm, mentally, I'm thinking, it was 2005 when Spirit was born here in Wichita, Kansas. Am I about right about that number? So I think seventeen, we're starting our seventeenth year now.
Wow.
So it seems like just yesterday, you know, this entire community has, you know, very, seems like very, it seems like yesterday, we were dealing with the issue of Boeing leaving and how sad we were. But I I would tell you that, at the time, we had no idea how this was going to turn out. What a huge blessing you have been to this community. Spirit Aero Systems, unlike almost any other aviation experience here in Wichita, has diversified. They have lots of customers. It's not just Boeing. And if you haven't noticed, we haven't seen the roller coaster of employment, and now the MAX was a special case. But that was well beyond our control here. And you guys weathered that storm, and now we're back at it again, competing in a world market like 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 we should. And the reality is Spirit Aero Systems has been a huge blessing to this community. I just want to say, you talk about 10,000 employees in our community, the dollars that that impact has in in this economy is probably almost uncalculable. I'd like to talk to Jeremy at WSU to find out how how Spirit Aero Systems has really benefited the community over those seventeen years. But it's got to be enormous, and I I know it is. So thank you for all you do. I'm proud to have them in my district, by the way. And I'm glad, I'm glad, as you mentioned, Chairman, I did work at Boeing back in the day when they were making the switch, and I know all the fear we had. And it's turned out really great for this community. So I want to say thank you for all you do. And for Textron, I actually spent eleven years working with Textron. I have the greatest memories of working at Textron, doing some incredible things. Business jets I got to touch, and the engineering, the technology that they create in that place, the instrumentation world that I was in is the best in the world, and I mean that with all my heart. They are very best instrumentation scientists at Textron Aerospace here in Wichita. They are doing things that is just unbelievable, I think. And so huge respect for Textron. Again, lots and lots of employees, the impact on this community is incredible. And of course, with WSU Tech, I got to serve on the board, I got to experience the inside of that and see how you guys do your thing. And I just want to say, you're very bullish, and it's a good thing you got it, you're going to recognize today. I know why that nineteen percent, or whatever the number was, stands out, because you don't, you don't just let things happen naturally. You actually are very aggressive and making things happen very intentionally. So thank you for all you do, Sheri. With that, Chairman, great choice. And I want to say thank you and congratulations to all the awards recipients today.
Nice comments, Commissioner Howell. Those are nice. My only regret is that I didn't buy a Spirit stock about fifteen months ago. But it's all right. Not the first mistake I made. All right. Next, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Last year, if you recall, I had the Chairman's Award went to our health providers. And it was a great award last year. It probably, they deserve it even more this year because of what they're facing, because of the unvaccinated people that keep clogging up our hospitals. But this year, again, I appreciate your decision. WSU Tech, I'm always proud of them, especially with the support that Sedgwick County has provided to make that a reality, and the workforce that you're turning out. Dr. Utash sits on some committees that I sit on to look at workforce development, to make sure that we're finding the workers that we need to move into the aircraft industry of the future. Spirit and Textron, we sincerely appreciate what you do, although I have one bone to pick with Textron, and I stole Tony, who's here in the room with us today. But I'll welcome him back. But economic development is at the top of our concerns, and what you do helps our economy continue to move. So again, Commissioner, Chairman, thank you very much for the recommendations last year and this year. I think they were both great choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I I think a lot has been mentioned from my colleagues, so I'll be brief. But I remember January fifteenth of 2020, when we had the press conference about the MAX being grounded, and then it quickly turned into, as we have all discovered, how we had to pivot. It was almost like that task force that was set up for that was set up for our COVID response. So it was like you guys preempted it with the grounding. It's supposed to be a joke, but nobody laughed. Thank you for laughing about that. I think it's important to understand how much you guys had to pivot over the last two years, the whole entire community. It's just been one people after the next. So I appreciate, you know, how you guys have changed the way that you do things and really caring for your employees. I know a lot of folks who work there and have mentioned the the safety measures that you've put in place. So I appreciate you guys taking that very seriously and making sure that your employees are safe. It's always a good day when I get to see Dr. Sheri Utash and her team. So I'm glad that we all get to see this innovator in our community. I love learning from the things that you do, how bold you are with every single decision that you make, and you're unafraid to just say what needs to be done. And I think we can all learn from you. And I'm so excited that you're here with your team. I didn't mean to scare you, Andy. I almost ran him over. But I could, how can you miss those yellow shoes? So anyway, thank you, Chairman, for your selections today. Good choice.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I Thank you so much. I mean, I I would reiterate everything I've heard. I mean, this, these were great choices for this. And growing up, both of my, both of my parents worked in the aviation field. So I saw really what, you know, what it looked like from that perspective, and the way that you treat your staff and your employees. I mean, it really does say something about about everybody in here that's being recognized. And so I really appreciate that. And then I think Commissioner Cruz really hit on a point that sticks, is innovative. You guys have been really innovative in taking this field into the future. And so Sheri and her team, and then, of course, to both of you, I mean, it's just incredible what you guys are able to do. And and I think that, you know, we are very lucky here in Sedgwick County to have all of you as leaders in this community. And I just, there are so many people that I think are just so deserving. And and I think Sheri, you are just an incredible woman, and I just appreciate everything that you and your team do. And so very good choices. I think you guys are doing some incredible work. So thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for all the comments. And listening to this, I'm I'm reminded, this is kind of the the leadership of our whole community and the biggest contributors. But there's so much of the supply chain and other businesses that support your support, and also so many citizens in business community support the school, support you all. So it's 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 even a bigger award. You're taking the award, but it's it's bigger, bigger impact on our whole community. And I thank those that are, anybody watching, you're you're part of this success, too, that. So thank you again, everybody. All right.
Okay, Commissioners, COVID-19 positive cases continue to arise. So we wanted to give our citizens a quick update. We've been trying to do this every week, of Sedgwick County's continued response to the pandemic. We ask that citizens continue to seek out testing at many, at one of the many vaccine testing clinics around the county. Every week, we try to pull up the sedgwickcounty.org/covid19, and you can just find this by a quick Google search. And it takes you to the Sedgwick County's COVID-19 page, where you can find all of the information. You've got those tabs on the left. And you really, it's really interactive and easy to find where those testing sites and also vaccine clinics are located here in our county. We also want people to remember, emergency rooms are for emergencies only, not for COVID-19 testing. That actually bogs down our hospitals. We understand transportation to these sites can be difficult for many. So we are working on an interactive map showing all testing locations along the Wichita Transit Route. We should have that rolled out here in the next coming weeks. Okay, Commissioners, looking at today's agenda, there's a proclamation declaring Martin Luther King Junior Day. Under Appointments, there is a resignation from the District Four Advisory Board, a report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts from their January sixth meeting. Under New Business Part One, a resolution establishing a Sedgwick County Regional Forensics Science Center Advisory Board that will be presented by Dr. Shelley Stedman. Under New Business Part Two, you will select a new chairman of the Board of County Commissioners and a chair pro temp to serve for the 2022 calendar year. With that, Chairman Meitzner, I turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Akeem, and good morning, everybody. Thank you for being a part of our earlier presentations. And thank you, Commissioners, again, for your for your comments and your support. So with that, we'll call the Wednesday, January twelfth, meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners to order. Madam Clerk?
invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
President.
Commissioner Dennis?
President.
Commissioner Howell?
President.
Commissioner Cruz?
President.
Chairman Meitzner?
President. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, I, we did not have any public email. We didn't. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I just.
Chairman, we did have one.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, too.
Okay, we had one that, sorry that I got by me. So, okay, we had one. Does anybody want to comment on that one? I don't see any. So motion to approve the emails that we received leading into the meeting. Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And as is customary, if somebody signs up before the meeting, they are allowed to make a public comment. We do have one person that signed up, Pastor Mo. You're more welcome to come address the Commission at the podium. We try to limit the these to about five minutes. So thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to have a few moments to address the council. Congratulations to the winners of the awards. I have a question. Can someone please tell me how it's possible to get justice if integrity is absent from the investigators? I know we're time restricted, so just bear with me here, because you're going to want to hear this first information here. I want to read to you a letter that was sent out through your county, sedgwick.gov email servers. Your IT people can confirm this. It was sent on Friday, January the seventh, 2022, at 4:09 PM. The subject is "Request." It goes all, "I am sending this to Reverend Richard Kirkendall, Reverend Herman Hicks, Reverend Kevis Harding, Reverend Buck DeShazer, Mr. Larry Burks of the NAACP, and Mr. Robert Moody, Attorney. I am also trying to reach out to Levanta Williams, but don't have her personal email. As you know, I am actively reviewing the death of Cedric Lofton that occurred as the result of actions that took place while he was in the Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center last September. I am obviously focused on the facts and the law, and those two factors will have to control my final assessment. But I want to make sure that before I make a final decision, I've heard concerns from the community. So I am asking that you consider coming to my office next week to share your thoughts and concerns. It is a bit of an unusual step to meet with a group of community leaders prior to making a determination that will be based only on the facts and the law. But again, I want to make sure I have not overlooked any consideration before I finalize my conclusion. To be clear, I'm not opening this up to the community at large. I have invited you folks, because I've always found you willing to listen, to offer constructive criticism, and because I believe you are each leaders in this community. I'm free the following times. Let me know if you're interested in attending. When I hear back, you get invite. Appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you. Mark Bennett, District Attorney. End letter. Time doesn't permit, but unless you request it. But there was an additional letter written by someone, possibly an attendee of the meeting, sent to the community activist groups, from someone who said that Cedric, that he taught Cedric and that he knew Cedric and had been interviewed in this investigation. They clearly attempted to discourage the community from responding and to focus on trusting Mark Bennett. Can someone please tell me how it's possible to get justice if integrity is absent from the investigators? See, it's strange to me that none of the family members, none of the attorneys for the family, none of the advocates for the family, none of the spokespeople for the family, none of the outspoken community activists were invited, notified, or debriefed on this letter, or the actual meeting that just took place on Monday. Why is this letter sent behind the scenes? If tampering with the witness pool is truly an issue, why cast bad light on this seventeen-year-old student? He was killed in Jiaq on the twenty-fourth and on the thirtieth. County Sheriff Jeff Easter and Sedgwick County District Attorney Mark Bennett tainted public opinion with misdirection, miscommunication, misrepresentation, and outright lies. Why share Cedric had been in foster care and had a previous run-in with law enforcement violating his privacy rights? Why share Cedric had previous encounters regarding mental health issues violating his HIPAA rights? Why imply that there was credible information Why imply that there was credible information or supposed receipt of information that Cedric possibly overdosed, specifically mentioning K2 and inferring fentanyl? And also listing the false charges of four counts of assaulting an officer? All of this violating his right to be considered innocent until proven guilty, tainting possible jury pools? You can't have it both ways because all of this was publicly disclosed, quote unquote, before the investigation had been completed. Also swaying people towards exoneration of the guilty parties that committed homicide by saying he only had a bruise and some scratches, claiming he was let out of the bathroom and wouldn't return to a cell without violence, again claiming he was fine alone in his cell and eventually found unresponsive, but by saying all of the preliminary coroner's reports showed that there were no life-threatening injuries. When those statements were made, the sheriff and the DA weren't aware the mother had taken pictures in the hospital. Instead of being strong leaders and recanting and issuing correction, the facts, evidence, and community was ignored. Then the coroner's report comes out showing there was no K2, no fentanyl, just some THC. It also shows that he was beaten from head to toe with bruises on his head, his neck, his shoulders, his chest, abdomen, legs, and ankles. He had internal bruising and acute kidney damage and was suffocated while being held down in the prone position, causing his heart to stop and eventually his brain to die from lack of oxygen. I'm finishing up here. Instead of, again, being a leader and being accountable, Mark Bennett doubles down. He surreptitiously sends an email to hold a clandestine meeting with a select group of community leaders that are disengaged to have them alter the narrative in the community. These lies combine with the covert approach and influence the community behind the scenes, before the investigation is over, before filing charges, before making any announcement. This is why we have no faith in the man who's never prosecuted law enforcement in Cedric County, ever. We, the community, have no faith that he possesses the intestinal fortitude necessary to operate at the level of leadership needed for a case such as this. So what we ask you is to use your influence towards the DA. I understand there's no law to support it, but nothing stops the DA from recusing himself. We need a special prosecutor. We need those videos and names released to the public. And I ask, can someone tell me, please, how it's possible to get justice if integrity is absent from the investigators? Hashtag not our sons, hashtag justice for Cedric. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Pastor for your comments. Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you Pastor Mo for being here today. Is there any way you could send that speech to me? Can you send that to me?
The speech?
Your comments just now. Is there any way you could send that to me in a written form?
I could do that.
I'd like to follow up with some of those points that you've made.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell. Hold on Pastor.
Thank you Chairman. I just wanted to ask, the email you referenced, would you be able to provide a copy of that to our staff so we can get a copy of that as well?
It was something that was shown to me, and so I know it was sent through your server. So you guys should actually have a copy. It came from mark.bennett@cedric.gov.
I just think the Commissioners ought to have access to.
Yeah, I think you absolutely should check that out and investigate that.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you again Pastor. I don't see any other comments. Have a nice year.
Thank you. You too.
All right, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Didn't see anybody else signed up? So we will close the public agenda and make a motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file?
Yeah. Second. So motion in a second, receive and file the public agenda comments. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of December 15th, 2021.
Commissioners, you received a copy of the minutes of December 15th. Is any corrections or additions or comments? Being none, I make a motion to approve. Motion in a second. Being no other comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
All right. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation declaring Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you Chairman. Whereas Americans have worked since the founding of our nation to create a country full of opportunity, where anyone with enough fortitude and spirit can rise to achievement, regardless of race, religion, or creed. And whereas those high aspirations require constant work and vigilance, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. dedicated his life to these ideals and throughout his life strived to make the United States inclusive and prosperous for Americans from all walks of life. And whereas today we celebrate the never-ending work of which Dr. King and countless other leaders fought so bravely, on this day, we hope to fulfill his vision of a country devoted to rejecting bigotry in all its forms and to embracing diversity at every opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January 17th, 2022 as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in recognition of Dr. King's service to his country and his mission to create a world where people are judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And with that, Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
And we will be reading this at the Arise Breakfast on Monday at 7:30. We will post the information as far as where the breakfast is being held. I don't know exactly where it's at right now off the top of my head. But I will be attending. I will be sending out that information, and I will be reading it at that time. Thank you so much.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, accept the resignation of Madison Schreiner from the District Four Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, County Counselor. Item C is the resignation of Madison Schreiner from Commissioner Cruz's Advisory Board. Ask to accept her resignation.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you Chairman. Madison has fallen to the redistricting, so she has been redistricted out of District Four. She was in one of those precincts that got moved into District One, so maybe she will apply for your board, I'm not sure. But Madison was a great addition. She is the director of the Park City Senior Center and does a lot there. I will miss her on this board. She was always in attendance and very engaged and had great ideas. And so it is with sadness that I must accept this resignation. I will make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll follow up with Madison. So, next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Cameron Dawson to fill a vacancy of the Cedric County Third District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have before you a resolution appointing Mr. Dawson to Commissioner Dennis's Third District Citizens Advisory Board. The resolution's in proper form, and ask to approve the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I did have an opening on my board due to a resignation, and I normally keep a file of individuals that are volunteering to serve on this board. It was very nice that I did have a file with Cameron Dawson's information on it. I did call him up, and then I invited him to our last board meeting, and he did attend that, and he's excited to become a member of our Citizens Advisory Board. So I don't have any openings right now, but we do have it open on the website right now so that I can have other file of potential nominees. So if anyone is interested, please fill out an application. I've gotten one so far. But this is one that I did have on file, and I appreciate Mr. Dawson volunteering. So I make a motion that we appoint Cameron Dawson to fill my vacancy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item E, resolution reappointing Pastor Roosevelt DeSager to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun again, County Counselor. Items E and items F could be taken together if it's the will of the board. These are reappointments, both of them reappointments, to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board. This is a very important board for the sheriff. They look at establishing policies and procedures, especially relating to promotions and hiring decisions for the sheriff. They're an appeals board for disciplinary matters for the sheriff, and they also approve all policies and procedures, personnel policies and procedures that come before you as well for the sheriff's department. You have before you today two resolutions reappointing two members to this board. You have Commissioner Howell's reappointment of Julia Kraft, and you have Chairman Meitzner's reappointment of the Pastor Roosevelt DeSager. This is a particular board where no more than a simple majority of the board members can be of any one political party, and we have met that standard with these reappointments. So we have the two resolutions before you in proper form, and ask that you make these reappointments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you Chairman. I don't have a lot to say other than just appreciate Julia Kraft and her service to the county, and she wants to continue, and I'm very pleased to support that. So, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve both items E and F, including Pastor DeSager as well as Julia Kraft.
And I will second that and comment that I appreciate Pastor DeSager's past contribution to this important board and confirm that he's done a very nice job of contributing and attendance. So thank you Pastor DeSager, if you're aware. So there's a motion in a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Next item, please.
New Business Part One. Item G, resolution establishing a Cedric County Regional Forensic Science Center Advisor Board, prescribing the number qualifications and manner of appointing its members and establishing its powers and duties, and rescribing Cedric County Resolution Number 269-1996.
Okay, Dr. Shelley.
Good morning. Shelley Stedman, the Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center, and I'm actually here on behalf of the Regional Forensic Science Center's Advisory Board to request that you rescind the existing resolution and adopt the proposed resolution that's before you today. The resolution that we are currently working from was put in place in 1996. Obviously, things have changed a little bit in the last 26 years, including the organizational structure of our facility, and also we now have digital meetings, electronic communication, and web-based forums that didn't exist when the board was initially created. So all of those things facilitate the exchange of information in ways that weren't possible back then. The current resolution appoints several high-level stakeholders to the board. All of those are included in this resolution that's before you. Additionally, you appoint two of the board members, one of which is a law enforcement officer from a second or third-class city, the other is a representative of an organization that does business with our facility. You recently appointed Darrell Atterbury and Dr. Ron Varner to those positions. Since then, we have convened, and we've looked at the existing resolution and come up with the proposal today. The old resolution requires that that board appoint a president and a vice president among them, and they are responsible for setting the quarterly meeting, and it also states that the district coroner will keep the minutes. And that may have made sense in 1996, but it's just not really feasible now for an outside stakeholder to have that additional responsibility. And the workload of our district coroner's office has changed dramatically in the last two or three decades. So as a matter of practicality, this resolution adds the forensic science center director to the board. I'm not currently a member. And it places the responsibility of the director to organize the meetings and the agendas and to keep the minutes for that advisory board. The other change, which was requested by the advisory board members, was that we meet twice per year and that the information that's generally exchanged at the quarterly meetings be made available to them. It's made available to them now through our website, and it's available to the public. And so they would like to go forward with the quarterly reports that coincide with the meetings at the approximate midpoints of the two actual meetings. So those are the changes. If you have any questions about the proposed resolution, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Okay. Shelley, thank you for bringing this to our attention and bringing it back in front of us. So I'm glad that everything seems to, what you're requesting seems to work. I can't believe you didn't have Zoom back in 1996?
No, we didn't.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay, any other questions or comments? I don't see any, Dr. Stedman, so I'll make a motion to approve item G as presented.
Second.
So motion in a second. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you again, Shelley, and thanks for all the work that you and your staff do for the community, and have a good New Year. Next item, please.
Item H, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on January 6th, 2022.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 6th has resulted in four items that we bring to you for approval. First one is on-call sign language services for various departments, and our recommendation is accept the proposals for on-call sign language services from Interpreters Unlimited Incorporated and Visual Language Professionals at the rates listed above for three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number two is tax foreclosure title search services for various departments, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Security First Title LLC at the rates listed for one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number three is the Office Supply Catalog Solutions for various departments, and this recommendation is to utilize the Sourcewell Contract 012320-SCC, and this is with Staples Contract and Commercial LLC. This is good through April 6th of 2024 and has a one-year option to renew. And our final item, four, server cluster district court information technology. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Ramses Storage Solutions, and this is based on the NCPA Contract 0196, and it's in the amount of $73,600, or excuse me, $963. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Okay, Joe, thank you for the work on this. Any questions about these items? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve the bids and contracts as presented.
Second.
So motion in a second to approve. No other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoles with the County Manager's Office recommending approval of consent items I through S this morning.
Okay, it's your, oh, that's right, okay. Consent, thank you. Any questions about consent items I through S? I don't see any. Make a motion to approve consent items I through S as presented by the manager.[1718.71] There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, please.
New Business Part Two. Item T, Selection of One Member of the Board of County Commissioners to Serve as Chair of the Board Through January 11, 2023.
Okay, Commissioners, we talked about this yesterday in staff meeting. The first is for the board, and I'd like to, okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Mr. Chairman, as we have done in the past, we would like to present you with this Chairman's Award so that you get to take yet another gavel and put it on your wall. We appreciate your service over the past year especially. I know that it's been a lot of late phone calls, a lot of angry people, a lot of scared people, a lot of just, I can't even name kind of what we've all been through in the past year, but I appreciate your leadership and your willingness to serve this commission and all the things that you've handled. So, Chairman, for the last day of your, we'd like to present this to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. That, I forgot that that comes, and thank you for those very kind comments. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I want to congratulate you on finishing up a very, very, very difficult year as leader of the commission. We've gone through a lot during this past year. We've received a lot of criticism for some of the things we've done, a lot of praise for some of the things that we've done. But no matter what, it requires a steady hand at the tiller in order to be able for us to move this county forward. So, your leadership has been instrumental in a lot of actions that have taken place that have moved this county forward. We're going to have some more decisions in the next year that are going to be just about as critical as they've been in the past two years under your leadership. But I just want to congratulate you and thank you very much from all the citizens in Cedric County for what you've done for the leadership of our organization. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Appreciate it. Thanks. My briefest of comments is that we all have some, something in each of us has a desire to serve the public, and I've had that as well for the last few years. Two years ago, was the chairman for the first year, and it was 24 months ago, and it looked, the future was bright. The Chiefs had won the Super Bowl. Life was really good. That was January, and then, so we had two months of a lot of fun, and then this pandemic hit in March. And incredible challenge, incredible challenge. No playbook. Nobody knew what was going on. Nobody knew any solutions. And we set a record that first year for special meetings, if I recall, continued on in the next year. So, in 24 months, two months were a lot of fun, and 22 were a lot of work. And my only sadness about all that, my main sadness, is that our community, I've said this before, our community is a very friendly community, and to see the divide between employees and families and friendships through this pandemic was not, it was not good to watch and witness and be a part of, because I think one time on one item, remember, we had over 1,100 emails in a matter of 48 hours or something like that. So, a lot of challenge, but I'm proud that we continued to battle through. The awards that we did this morning proves the community is back on its feet the best it can be, and we're all battling through this, continue to, but at least it's, it appears to be a little more respectful in today's world, at least from my perspective, and hope that, hope it continues. So, I only wish our community the best, and thank you both and everybody for your comments and for allowing me to serve as the chair this past year. Commissioner Howell?
Chairman, I just want to say thank you again. We don't agree on everything, obviously. Nobody agrees with anybody all the time, but it has been a very difficult two years, and I wanted to say I recognize your leadership. You've done a good job leading the commission, and this community has had a very, very challenging time, especially since March of 2020. And I know that it just coincides a little bit with your putting this position, so maybe, just as a bit of a joke, maybe it's time for someone different there, I don't know. But I do appreciate your leadership. I don't think it's your fault, obviously. It has been a very, very challenging time, and you've done a great job. So, thank you for your leadership, sir.
Thanks, Commissioner Howell, I appreciate it. And I know that at times, the emotion even got to each of us here at the bench a few times, and maybe it might have appeared to the public that we were challenged with each other, but we got through it, and so, thank you, everybody. And Commissioner Lopez?
Well, you know, I think I just will say everything that everybody said. I mean, I really appreciate your leadership over this past year, and coming in, it's my first year, you know, you really took it upon yourself as chair to take me under your wing and explain why things are done the way they're done, and, you know, just really helped me in this past year just get accustomed to this role, and so, I definitely appreciate that. And then, your just steady leadership throughout has been much appreciated for our community and for the rest of us. So, I appreciate everything you've done as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're going to have to start charging for your life coach skills.
That's right. No, Commissioner Lopez, you've done a nice job of, you've really been a student of this commission, and you've taken the approach of listen and learn a lot, and I think it's done you well. So, thank you for the comments. Okay, well, thanks for all the love. I didn't hear anything from Mr. Papoon or Tom, but I assume that's okay. I'm okay. I'm comfortable in my skin, okay? All right, everybody. Let's move on to Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, the item before us right now is selection of one member of, I'm sorry. I just, I've already thanked you for what you've done, but once again, I appreciate everything that this entire commission has done. So, each and every one of us need to be commended for what has happened during the past year, two years, as a result of COVID. So, I know that it was the leadership of Chairman Meitzner, but as it came down to a lot of critical votes during the past two years, each and every one of the commissioners has stepped up to that challenge, and I just want to thank each and every one of them. I know that right now, we were thanking the chairman, but it was really a team effort on how that we got to where we're at and where we're going in the future. So, I don't want to take anything away from all five members on this board for what they have done and the difficulties that they've encountered. Over 1,000 emails a day at times, trying to make decisions with poor information at the best. We made what, in my opinion, are probably some bad decisions now on hindsight, but hindsight is 2020, and so, we have to make the decisions that are best at the time. And again, we're recognizing right now the leadership of one individual, but really, it's the leadership of five individuals that have made a difference over the past two years and especially the past year, and it's going to be the leadership of all five individuals for the next year that's going to make a difference. So, I just wanted to make sure that we recognized everyone for their challenges that they faced. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Great comments. Commissioner Dennis, that's very true, very true. So, with that, we move on to the first item, which is the vote for the chairman going forward. And so, we have agreed that we would do a paper ballot, and we would make a motion that would not need a second. I'd be glad to nominate Commissioner Dennis for the chairmanship next year and open it up to any other nominations. I don't see any at this point, so if the Commissioners would please mark your ballot and sign and hand to the clerk. Commissioner Cruz?
Oh, this is for the next one.
Okay.
Commissioner Lopez votes for Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Cruz votes for Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell votes for Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Dennis votes for Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Meitzner votes for Commissioner Dennis.
Congratulations, Commissioner Dennis. You will be our new chair going into 2022. So, the next item is we vote for the pro-chair, I mean, pro-tem, the chair pro-tem, and Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I can still call you that till the end of the meeting, right?
I think that's right.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Lopez for pro-tem.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
I think, Mr. Chairman. Well, I want to echo Mr. Cruz's comments. I believe that the most important quality, let me turn my mic on.
Okay.
I believe the most important quality of a Cedric County leader or any other elected official is not how you're registered to vote, but how you vote. It's not on what or how much you say, but what you do. Cedric County decisions have a significant impact and long-lasting impact on our citizens. Commissioner Sarah Lopez has proven to be engaged, has spent time learning, researching, participating in our biggest county issues. With her background in the hospital industry, she continues to be an asset that we welcome and try and engage the community and our business in this fight against this pandemic. Having her serve as the pro-tem will bring diversity of leadership, as she and I work together with this commission to collaborate and partner with our first and second-class citizens in Cedric County. Our business, our schools, the issues that we face in the community, and especially keeping jobs here and economic development, those are, most importantly, the health and well-being of our citizens. She cares about our community, this organization, and our employees. Therefore, I believe that she will be an excellent fit for our pro-tem, and I concur with the nomination. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Meitzner for pro-tem.
Well, Commissioner Howell, thank you for that motion. As a matter of fact, I was going to, based on your years of service, I was going to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Howell for pro-tem. So, just out of respect for your service and out of respect for all of us here at the bench. So, okay, any other motions or nominations? I don't see any, so you have a ballot in front of you. Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Cruz votes for Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Lopez votes for Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Howell votes for Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Meitzner votes for Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Dennis votes for Commissioner Lopez.
Okay, votes are cast. Commissioner Lopez, congratulations and best of luck for this coming year in your role. You'll do a fine job. Okay, that, next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Yes, Akeem, legislative issues.
Commissioners, Akeem Asher, Communications Director. Again, this week is actually a happy week for many because lawmakers actually headed back to Topeka, and it's an opportunity for me to exercise another part of my role here at Cedric County, and that is to push our legislative platform and agenda forward. Last year, we had a lot of success, and we hope to have a lot of success this year. So, Monday, I actually went up to Topeka and spent some time with Jason Watkins and Jessica Lucas, our contract lobbyists for the county. I had a really good time. There's not a lot that actually happens on that first day of session. It's just kind of a lot of meet and greet faces, old friends, and meeting some new friends. So, it was a great opportunity, so I think leadership for allowing me to do so. I will also head up to Topeka more often this year since I had a year under my belt and kind of spend more time up there with Jason and Jessica and Commissioners. They are also available to meet with us at any time via Zoom as well and telephone call if you so wish to do so. Monday was also a very good day. We'd like to say congratulations to Representative Leah Howell of District 81. She is the interim representative for the district, and as you guys know, Mayor know, this is Commissioner Howell's wife. So, big congratulations to her on that. You want to say something, Commissioner?
I just want to say congratulations to her. It's kind of an interesting chapter in my life and in her life as well. So, thank you for saying that today.
You're welcome, Chairman, or Commissioner, sorry. Additionally, with that, I met with lawmakers from the South Central Kansas delegation. As you all know, we actually had them, hosted them here in Wichita recently and had a series of meetings just to kind of go over this year's platform, and it was an opportunity for different organizations to speak with lawmakers and kind of give them our perspective on what we're looking for for the year. And so, with that, our team, Nicole Gibbs, Public Information Officer, she actually worked with Chairman Meitzner to put together a PowerPoint that he presented to the delegation, which was well-received, and just kind of went over our platform as a whole. As you guys know, we've got the long-form platform as well as the business cards. On Monday, I was able to hand out both again to lawmakers, and I hope to continue to do so as the session goes on. Many thanks to Laura Wingwater for putting that together, and then also, again, for Chairman Meitzner for his presentation. I'm not sure if Mike Papoon has anything. Other than that, I don't know if you've got anything as well, Chairman.
Okay. Well, thanks for that update. I know they're getting started. We all have our own contacts there in Topeka. Seems like we do have a few critical issues and working not only on behalf of the commission but on behalf of the region with, along with the Chamber Partners, GWP, City of Wichita, and I think we're still looking at some of those. We may have a, I know that that combined statement is being looked at, and maybe it's going to be slightly tweaked coming up, and I think we're maybe even going to, last minute this morning, maybe have a little workshop or a staff meeting about adjusting or reviewing that going forward. And I know that the governor made that executive order Thursday, which allowed, I can't, I'm losing the words, but helps the hospitals and the long-term care facilities with their staffing issues, and it's brought to my attention that if we could expand that to include county health departments, would be very helpful because we were challenged with staffing as well. It's the same stuff. So, I think it's important that we make sure we've covered all of the critical things that we want to cover. It's just my comments, but we can get that done here in the next. Please, everybody use your own connections as we plod through this forward. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to share a couple of things. I did spend the entire day Monday up there in the Capitol, and I had great conversations with many, many legislators, and I talked about our platform and a number of issues with quite a few legislators. This is a very interesting year. For the first time, I think, in forever, the state's actually sitting on a huge amount of money. As of today, they are looking at about a $3 billion surplus, and there's a lot of reasons as to why that happened, but we have a couple of opportunities right now, but what I do expect, every term in the House is considered, you know, the bills start in their first year, and they can wrap them up in their second year. Their first year typically, if you watch the history of that, they're typically longer sessions, their first year and their second years are typically abbreviated. And just like any other governing body, the only thing they actually have to do that keeps them in Topeka is pass a budget. And most years, there's tax bills that are coupled with that budget because they have to fund, they have to fund the budget. So, usually, it's a race between passing a budget and passing some type of tax bill to fund that budget. This year is a little bit different. The food sales tax obviously is a very hot topic. They're not going to leave Topeka without doing something with food sales tax. But in terms of the budget, this is probably going to be a record year, in my opinion, in terms of, they're not going to have a hard time finding the funds to fund that budget because they already have them, so to speak. There's going to be some debate as to what to do with that $3 billion. There's different ideas that are floating on that, but I do see that this is probably going to be a very short session, and I think that everyone up there thinks the same thing. I have some questions to our legislative friends, and I still don't have an answer. I did mention this a few weeks back on the food sales tax, how that impacts local government. I saw Lindsey was here earlier, but about 14.6% of our revenue on sales tax to the county and to other local governments here in Cedric County is considered coming from food sales tax. food sales tax. And so the net effect of that is about a $4 million potential reduction to Sedgwick County revenue. I may be off on my numbers a little bit, but it's about that number. There's still some questions as to how this, any of those bills impacts our revenues, Chairman. So I think that's a very major question. I think we need to continue to push on that, to find some clarity on that issue. I'm not being able to read either one of the bills from Republicans or Democrats on the food sales tax, but I think it's probably one of our bigger issues. We need to figure that out quickly. So with that, I just wanted to say I was very engaged on Monday. This is a great time of year for us to engage a lot of our issues because none of the bills are moving forward yet. Most of the committees are not meeting yet. There's a lot of opportunity this week, today and tomorrow. They have a four-day weekend coming up here with pro forma and with Martin Luther King Day, but this is a great week for us to engage every issue and get them started somewhere. So I have meetings scheduled with a number of legislators already on some of the issues on our platform. I just want to let you know that, and those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And extend to Leah, our congratulations on her. That's really good. Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It deals with legislative issues, but it deals with one from a couple of years ago. A couple of years ago, we passed, we had on our legislative agenda, and it passed a bill to allow the voters to vote anywhere here in Sedgwick County. And since that time, we haven't been able to do it, even though it passed. So I don't know what kind of lobbying we need to do with the Secretary of State in order to be able to implement this, but this is a critical year coming up with the election of the governor and a lot of the legislative leaders. And I'm just concerned that something that we had on our legislative agenda several years ago, which passed the legislature, we still can't do. So unless someone has some updated information that says we're going to be able to do that, what do we have to do to go back and find out how that we can be able to vote anywhere based on the law that was passed?
Okay, thanks for your comments. All right, any others? I don't see any, so, okay. Well, we've got some work to do and some challenges ahead. Okay, we'll close the legislative issues part. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, committee reports. Do you have, anybody have anything to update on the committees that they serve on? I know, as we said before, December was kind of a slow month, so I'm sure January we'll have some reports that we can share. So we will, seeing nothing on committee reports, we'll go to, next item, please.
Other.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Is there any way that we could get the dashboard pulled up, the COVID dashboard? And while she's pulling that up, I've asked Mr. Papoun, I have reached out to Justin Wagner to see if he could come in and let us know what kind of measures we had at the previous time when our test, when our positivity rate was this high. So he should be coming in with that pretty soon. If you see at our chart here, it looks like if we want to scroll in a little bit to where the last, the highest point in this pandemic over the past 24 months, the positivity rate, and I understand that we're focusing on hospitalizations now, but I think it's important to understand the spread in which this is happening in our community. And I just want to, I just want to talk about it because, you know, just today, on the way to school, you know, my daughter's like, I don't feel very good. And I'm like, and is she sick? Our children are coming down with this, and when we had the positivity rate in November of 2020, it was at 20.2. Do we all see this? And now today, today, it's at 20.1. So what measures did we have in place, Justin, specifically at that time? Just as a reference for, you know, what we had done to try to slow this spread?
Certainly, Commissioner Cruz, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. And just in looking through what we had in place in November 2020, I believe the County Commission had passed a mask resolution, well, I shouldn't say a mask resolution. Dr. Menz had issued a mask order. There was no requirement the Board of County Commissioners take any action on that. That the order required the wearing of masks in public spaces, also set in place social distancing and mask gatherings restrictions, and then there is an enforcement agreement reached between the City of Wichita City Council and the Board of County Commissioners regarding the enforcement of any violations of that order.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I understand there's not an appetite in this community for any mandates. I get it. I don't want to mandate anything, but in two months, we will be into the third year of this pandemic, and I don't know about you guys, but I'm really tired of this. I think we're all tired of it, and we started at the very beginning talking about what are we going to do to try to slow this spread, to save people's lives, and now with over 1,000 people that have died within our community and pushing, I don't even know how many in the nation, I think it's time to talk about this again. What are we going to do as a community to help our hospital systems? We saw they're reaching out to us for help, and as the Board of Health, we can't just sit on our hands and do nothing. We at least, at the very least, have to have a conversation about it. Now, there's been some talk that, about vaccines, and for whatever reason, if you don't want to take the vaccine, that's your prerogative, and I respect that. But when does this end, and how do we end it collectively as a community so that we can get back to normal, whatever that looks like? So if we were, if Dr. Menz was to bring an order to us, what is the ramifications around a mask recommendation? We don't even have a mask recommendation from this board, do we? I mean, I get it, nobody wants to require it, but do we even have that in place as a recommend, recommendation for the community?
I think, I think we heard from Dr. Menz in September, October, I believe, and he put guidelines out, recommendations out for masking, responsible distancing, and emphasized vaccinations. I don't think the commission has taken any action. I don't think Dr. Menz has taken any action to undo that. So today, we still have those guidelines.
So it's still in place, okay. So I do appreciate the chamber sending something out yesterday to businesses, talking about the importance of helping our hospital systems. I think that that is helpful to know other organizations are doing what they can. I don't know, I just, I think it's important that we talk about it. People are asking, what are we going to do? Are we just going to sit on our hands? Or are we going to talk about the spread in this community and how people are getting really sick? I just had a mother reach out to me today that she's sick trying to take care of her two children. They haven't had a meal, and she's too sick to make them dinner. So there are people in this community that are not in a good position, and what are we going to do? Are we going to do nothing, or are we just going to, at the very least, have a conversation about it? I guess that's what I'm asking my colleagues today. How we can see this positivity rate and not even have a conversation about it?
Well, I could comment that, a couple of things. I get on Apple News, if you have an iPhone, and Apple does a daily update, and I would just show on Commissioner Dennis, and the darkness, you all can't see it, but it's pretty easy. It's right in, it's easy to get to, and the darkness is the cases per hundred, and this thing is going on big time around the country. Second of all, as Tom and I, Tom had pointed out, I had three quick comments, but so the hospital numbers that we're on, and Commissioner Lopez has been on these calls on Monday, the analysis that we are, I don't want to misquote, the number of hospitalizations now are similar to what they were in January last year. Pretty close, actually, even hospital, and ICU and ventilator beds, ventilators. And the difference is the vaccines were not fully out a year ago, and so we had all of these hospitalizations with a population of 500,000 and then the region, and now, a year later, they say over half of the populate, you know, 55% have had at least one dose and maybe 52 or 50 have two doses, and then a booster is less. So we have the vaccine in half the population today, and the numbers are similar, so follow my madness. So in most, 90-plus percent of the hospitalizations are people that are not vaccinated. So basically, half of the population that's not vaccinated are taking up all of the beds in the hospital that the whole population was taking up a year ago. So my push is to still recommend that you get vaccinated, and if you don't want to, you need to be aware of your surroundings for yourself and all the people you're around. And you ought to be taking extra precaution because you may not even know you're carrying it and all those things. So that's the second thing. And lastly, the third thing is that the hospitals have really coalitioned together statewide and because I think now they're all witnessing, as Commissioner Lopez and I were on, somebody's sick in western Kansas and they can't get a bed in Salina even, or for sure here, we're not taking patients from outside the area. So there's a little, so in Kansas, I think the hospitals, well, the hospitals feel that it's only a problem, the public thinks it's only a problem in the hospitals, and I'm not in the hospital, so I don't have a problem, right? Basically is what they're saying. So they really want the public to know that they are in a crisis, especially help, because everybody's out because they have it, and that's going on in a lot of industries. So, but I am glad that the hospitals are coming together to share their message, especially in Topeka, if there's something else that the legislation can do to help support and hospitalizations, as well as what we just talked about, the local health departments. So those are the three items that I was contributing, and I would just emphasize that I don't know if we can continue to get some vaccinations as best we can. In MDL Lab, they did six, over 6,000 tests yesterday. I talked to WSU person this morning, and they did, so they can do, I think, 8,000 to 10,000 a day, but that's the first time they've ever done 6,000 tests in one day. And they're running into a little bit of staff problem because obviously there's 6,000 tests coming in, and each one of those tests have been handled by somebody that 20% of them have COVID, so they're kind of, their staff is exposed and out. So there's a big challenge going on on that, so I know Commissioner Lopez.
Can I respond real fast?
Sure.
I just, I want to make sure that my colleagues understand that, I appreciate your comments, and I think there is a level of expectation from our community to at least address what's going on, and so I appreciate you sharing those things, and I don't want my colleagues to take my comments as coming across of, you know, you're not doing anything, but we do have to have a conversation about it, and that's really why I want to have this conversation right now, because I think it's important for the community to hear from you guys from this platform so that we are paying attention, but at some point, the community, we've got to understand that it's everybody's responsibility. So I appreciate you letting me speak.
Your bet, thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I just had a couple of things to add. So Commissioner Meitzner, you brought up a good point. We are seeing numbers in our hospitals similar to what we were seeing over a year ago. The difference right now is we're also seeing a spike in influenza cases, and on normal years without COVID, the flu would take up our hospitals. Our hospitals would be fully, I mean, just overwhelmed almost to that point with flu cases. So right now, to have this large of an influx of patients coming in due to COVID on top of their normal flu cases and car wrecks and strokes and everything else, it's just, it's tipping the limit where, you know, our medical community is really having a hard time keeping up, and there are more people coming in needing a bed than there are leaving at this time, which is creating all kinds of issues in our healthcare system right now. So I would like to add, if you know anybody who works in medicine or in our hospital system or healthcare system, to just be extra kind to them because they really thought when the vaccine came out, and while they thought they were seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and that just hasn't been the case because not enough people have been vaccinated. So right now is probably the hardest time they've had up to this point with the pandemic, and they've shared that frustration, and, you know, on these calls that we're on weekly are just, it's really a dire situation, and I don't know if the community at large realizes the impact that this will continue to have on our community. And we have people waiting in the ERs, not just hours but days at this point. It's not just COVID-positive patients that are affected. It is anybody who is seriously sick enough to need a hospital bed is going to be affected by this, and our family members and loved ones and coworkers and friends, and it's a nerve-wracking time. So I would just suggest going forward, you know, beyond COVID measures, wearing a mask and being vaccinated, be extra careful when you're driving. I mean, try to do everything you can to limit your ability to get hurt and to need a hospital bed right now because there's just not enough for everybody at this point in time. We have had discussions, what if we needed to create another site? National Guard really, in the medical community, is being taxed right now in their real jobs on the front line, so we can't pull them from that. Thankfully, with the governor's order, we could bring in nursing students, and if we needed to do that, we, you know, we'll go down that path and look at that. But these numbers aren't slowing down anytime soon. I mean, we are still at the beginning stages of this new variant, and we need to keep that in mind. So when you're in public, you need to be wearing a mask. That's just the reality of it. We have to do something to help our medical community, and, you know, it's upsetting that so many people still don't believe this, and I hate that it's going to take until it affects you personally, but I, you know, that's, I think, where we're at. So anybody who is watching and paying attention, please wear a mask, please get vaccinated. If you haven't, get your booster shot if you're eligible. Like Commissioner Cruz said, our kids are getting sick. This variant is impacting our children more. Schools are seeing a lot of absences in teachers, and my son has COVID right now and is at home and not in school, and he's one of many in his class. So just take the warning and realize that the situation is, it's worse today than it has been up to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, my son is also at home with COVID right now, and he has had the shot, but he isn't in the hospital, and I don't think that there's a fear that he's going to die right now because he has been vaccinated. The spike that we see is driven by the folks that are not vaccinated and aren't trying to protect the rest of the community. I don't believe that there is a will right now in the community for a mask mandate, although a lot of people are saying that maybe we need one, but I don't believe that there is a will for that. What we're seeing right now is that only a little over 50% of our population is vaccinated currently, and I don't think that other half that won't even get the vaccine would ever think about wearing a mask either, so it would just be a battle, and I do not want to shift the battle over to the businesses. I think that's the wrong thing to do. I guess, for those that don't believe that we're watching this each and every day and don't believe that the Sedgwick County has an impact if we do anything, I'm going to invite Justin back up to the podium and ask him two questions. What is the impact, first of all, my first question is, what is the impact of Senate Bill 40 that was just upheld by the Supreme Court have if we took any kind of action?
Again, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner Dennis, your question would be, are you asking specifically if the commission, for example, if an order was adopted for a mask order?
If Dr. Menz recommended a mask, any kind of order, and the commission... If Dr. Menz recommended a, a ma, any kind of a, an order, and the Commission would then have to make a decision on whether or not to, to adopt that?
Sure. And if, if that would end up being adopted, just like any other orders pursuant to Senate Bill 40, which you're correct, the Supreme Court did not uphold, there was a district court decision out of Johnson County that had found the entire bill unconstitutional, and, and the Supreme Court essentially reversed that decision, did not uphold it. They, not necessarily saying it is constitutional, they just didn't really address that question. They said the district court judge in Johnson County didn't necessarily need to get to the question of constitutionality there. Because of that, Senate Bill 40 is still in place and does still have to be considered. The potential impact of that would be that any aggrieved person would be, would have the opportunity to file a lawsuit in district court challenging the order. They would be entitled to a hearing within 72 hours, which is very atypical. It's a very atypical aspect about Senate Bill 40. And then the court, district court would have to issue a decision within 10 days of when they filed that case as well. So it, it runs the potential of creating a number of claims against any such order that might be filed.
Okay. Thank you. And the second question is, what's the impact of House Bill 2313?
That's a good question, Commissioner Dennis. I, I guess I'll start off first by saying, House Bill 2313, if we're talking about like a mask order, is worded, it's very unclear specifically what the impact would be. I'll, I'll mention in general what House Bill 2313 does. It creates a, an ability for a business who is, and the, the term used in the bill is restricted. If a business is restricted, then they can make a claim for refund of their taxes for a prorata portion of the year that they've been restricted. It's very unclear, because I'm not aware of any court cases that have construed House Bill 2313. It's very unclear from its language whether that would or would not apply to a mask order. And it's also unclear as to how that would be calculated if it did apply to a mask order. It'd be nice if the legislation was a little, was much clearer. It's very vague, and, you know, there could be argued that it does not apply to a mask order and would instead apply only to capacity limitations or hours of operation limitations. But again, that's something that there's not much clarity on. I wish I could tell you for sure one way or another, but it's just not that clear.
But if there was a mask order and, and someone came into a business and they think that they have to enforce that mask order, that could impact that business?
That's, that's a claim that might be made. I don't know how a court would handle that. And, and I guess perhaps what I didn't address before is, if a party was successful on a claim on that, then the, the, it would be a prorata share of the property taxes throughout the year, and it wouldn't just be the county's portion of the property taxes, it would be all property taxes. So it would be school district taxes, city taxes, state property taxes, that the county would have to reimburse out of the county's general fund to a successful business who may claim relief under that. Again, it's still very tough to know exactly how that bill would be interpreted, but it's, it is something to consider.
Very good. Well, thanks, Justin. I just wanted the public to know that we watch these numbers every single day, and we do care. What kind of action we could take, I, I think is limited to a great deal by House Bill 2313 and Senate Bill 40. And we have to be cognizant of those two things. So the, the message that we are trying to get out is that you need to get the vaccine. That's the only thing that's going to get us through this. So please, I ask the public, we've given, the last time I, I looked on the internet over 6 billion times, this vaccine has been administered. And for those that don't think it's safe, I cannot believe that you could say that something that has been given 6 billion times across the world is not safe. So I'm just baffled at, at the, the reasoning behind it. So anyway, I think I've said enough on that. While we're on other, rather than me turning my light on again, I want to hit a couple of other things real quick, if you don't mind. First of all, I want to congratulate Becky Tuttle, new Vice Mayor of the City of Wichita. I want to congratulate her. I look forward to meeting with her and Mayor Whipple and, and Commissioner Lopez as we work jointly with the city to help move our community forward. The other thing, I normally don't advertise things like this, but because it goes to a great cause, Ability Point in Starkey, there is a fundraising effort this weekend for two organizations that really have a direct impact on Sedgwick County CDDO, because we look to take care of those people that can't take care of themselves for one reason or another. So I just want to remind everyone that Inside Century 2 this weekend, Friday from noon to 9:00 p.m., Saturday 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. is the 65th Annual Starbird Devil and Car Show, and 100% of the protein seeds go to those two charities. So I'll be down there. I hope to see everyone else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Lopez, did you have some?
I have one more thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
I just wanted to mention that, and you touched on this, Commissioner Meister, for the WSU MDL Lab, they have workforce shortages like we all are experiencing right now, and their main focus and priority is going to be within the lab processing the samples that have been collected and not collecting samples. So they have made a very hard decision, and they are no longer collecting samples at their site as of today. And hopefully, that won't be for long, but for now, that is the case. So if we could push our business and nonprofit and church partners that are able to collect samples, to really try and collect as many samples as they possibly can and, and turn those into the lab. They did collect over 6,000 samples yesterday total and ran that many, which is more than we have to this point. They're capable of, I think, up to 10,000. So we have some more room to go there that we can still do this. But do not go to the WSU MDL Lab to be tested. You can get on the Sedgwick County website and see all the testing locations, and there's, through the state, has another, another area that you can see testing locations as well. But MDL is, is not collecting samples today. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I hope that is temporary. Okay. Anybody else have anything under other? I don't see any, so we will close that. Next item. Do we have an executive session today?
No.
Okay, we do, no. All right. So if there's anything else, come before the, the Board of Commission. Again, my congratulations to our new chairman going forward, Chairman Dennis, and Pro Tim Lopez. So the seating will be rearranged the next time you tune into all this invigorating television that we have. So thank you all. It's been a, it's been an honor to serve as, as the chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for instilling trust in me, and thank you, staff. You've been fantastic and responsive. I just can't thank the staff enough for, and the leadership that you've done during these tiring times. So thank you, everybody. So with that, we will adjourn and see you next week.